I'm going to ask Councilwoman Cook to lead us in prayer and Councilman Lewis to lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect our community, and continue to remind us all that what we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our prayers allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cook and Councilman Lewis. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council Meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I'd like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any items on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Eyes for submission to the council should be handed to Council Clerk Ms. Veronica L. Williams seated to my left. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The three-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. And finally, all documents referenced to the meetings can be found on the LCG website. Chair announcements. Item number 24JO015-2021 has a proposed amendment submitted by Finance to replace the budget revision with a budget revision revised budget and revision. I'd like to call up a dignitary who's in the office with us, Ms. Sarah Dake. She is with Senator John Kennedy's office. Sarah, if you want to take this podium. Thank you for joining us in Lafayette. We appreciate it.
Well, I thank you guys for having me so much. I just wanted to introduce myself really quick for anybody that didn't know. My name is Sarah Dake. I was born and raised in Lafayette, and I recently became Senator John Kennedy's Akadia Representative. So basically, what that means is I'm your go-to contact for anything on the federal level. I've been working, you know, with your Mayor President Josh very often and look forward to working with you even more. If y'all have any constituents that need help with getting their veterans benefits, their Social Security benefits, you know, it's tax season. If they're having any issues getting their tax returns or their stimulus checks, that is something that our office can help out with. So looking forward to working with you guys even more so. And if y'all need anything, give me a call.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers, anything? Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor. Oh, for Sarah?
I didn't announce.
Okay, nope, that's all. Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Give Senator Kennedy our best and thank him for his service. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to announce that this Saturday, August 24th, is actually National Prescription Take Back Drug Day. It is a crucial public safety and public health issue. According to the 2020 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, 9.7 million people misuse prescription drug pain, excuse me, pain relievers, 4.9 million people misuse prescription stimulants, and 5.9 million people misuse prescription tranquilizers or sedatives. The survey also showed that a majority of misused prescription drugs were obtained from family and friends, often from the home medicine cabinet. So this DEA Take Back Day event provides an opportunity for the community and for our Americans to help prevent drug addiction and overdose deaths. And so with that intro, I wanted to mention there's a couple of, we actually, the Sheriff's Department usually does this, and it's twice a year that it happens, and they did it already in the fall. And so the spring, we did not have one in place. And so I actually reached out to Sidra and I reached out to the Police Department to see about getting one put in place. And actually, it was, it can't be done this go-around. So they are going to be moving forward. It will be something that they're looking into doing, and so we'll alternate between the sheriffs in the fall, excuse me, and the Police Department in the spring. But we do have some locations that you can drop off medications. On a weekly basis, we have five pharmacies in town. They're the North Side Pharmacy on Moss, the Medicine Bin on Willow, Test Drugs Downtown, University Hospital Clinics, and the I Care Pharmacy. Now, these are during the week. On Saturdays, as well as during the week, we have actually three Walgreens in Lafayette, the one on Johnson, Ambassador, and Colly Saloon, and then the CVS on Colly Saloon. All of these will take back prescription drugs during the week and those last four on the weekends. For the Take Back Drug Day, this Saturday coming, there are two locations in our parish, though. Scott, Louisiana, has one at the State Farm Agency at 5808 Cameron Street, and that's the Police Department there is handling that, and the drop-off is at the State Farm Agency. And then Broussard is also having one at the Walgreens on St. Nazaire Street. So those are some Saturday locations also as well. But know that we do have that opportunity throughout the year, and on days like this Saturday when it's a national event like that, it is, you know, it's kind of brought to light how important it is for us to get these medications out of our cabinets, not flush them down the toilet, flushing them, putting them in your trash, but getting them out of the reach of children, or other people. So basically, this is an opportunity this Saturday, but know that they are all those other locations available as well. And I'm going to ask that we maybe post that on the LCG website so that we have those locations, so that moving forward, you'll have those. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And would you please send that to the council members as well, so that way we can all have it for our constituents, too? Thank you. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. For that information. What about these syringes? Are they taking those back as well?
Not on this day, not on the day, not on this particular day. They're not taking that back. I think that's a, that's, some of these locations do, though. I know that they do have a drop-off there as well, but you'd have to probably call individually to find that out. But this particular at Scott and Broussard location for this Saturday is not, they're not taking that back.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor. I know there have been a series of, an impending series of property transfers involving the school board and the city, and one of them have to do with the school board, I guess, selling what's considered the Vermillion Conference Center and adjacent grounds. And I think, I'm not sure the extent of the city's involvement in that process, and it's not nothing that has to be answered tonight. It's just a request for information.
Sure.
One of the concerns that's been expressed to me is what's going to happen with the McComb-Vize Community Garden, an excellent program that they have, tract of land that's located right next door to the Vermillion Conference Center. Could someone look into that for me?
Sure.
And if, in fact, it's going to be impacted, if we could start the process of looking for an alternative site so we could continue that excellent program?
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other council announcements. Executive Mayor's report. Mayor, let me give you the floor back. Give me one second. Floor's yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been good to see you multiple times today in different settings.
We've had a couple of meetings today. Thank you.
All good, though.
Yes.
Okay, so before you guys, there's a little pamphlet and also for the public up here on this table right here. It's a list of the programs that our Parks and Recreation Department is putting on. Lot of summer programs. I will tell you, though, that's not an exhaustive list. I know Hollis is working very hard, also Ross and Roll and Jamie and all those guys are really burning the midnight oil to try to see if we can put some summer, additional summer programs and camps together. As you guys can imagine, with the signup being normally November, December, January, and COVID not knowing really what summer would hold, very proud of these guys working so hard. And so I anticipate some additional camps to be added. But if you guys could share that with your constituent, I think it'll go a long way. But just be flexible, because there will be some more services offered to our wonderful citizens. Also, Madam Chair, if we could, I have a request. Councilman Lazard asked me to put this on the discussion, as a discussion item next council meeting. If Chief Glover, who's in attendance, can give an update in two weeks on our training. The council approved a budget increase for training, and I think, and I share in his desire to educate and inform the public on all the activities that Chief has scheduled for as officers. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Mayor, would you also send, you or the Director, send a Word document, or that way we can email this as well, please? Thank you. And send it to the council members?
You got it. I'll have comms do that.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to resolutions. Jeremy, will you please read?
City.
You go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead.
City Resolution 5, 2021, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal of special taxes therein, making application to the state bond commission in connection therewith and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Cook, second by Nakhan. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 6, 2021, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the submission of an application with the Louisiana Highway Safety Commission for a 2021-2022 overtime traffic safety enforcement grant for the Lafayette Police Department.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 7, 2021, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council informing the state of Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality that the Lafayette utility system has taken the appropriate action concerning permit requirements contained in LPDES permits numbered LA 36382, LA 36374, LA 36391, and LA 42561.
I have a motion by Nakhan, second by Lazard. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Moving on to joint resolutions. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
Joint Resolution 10, 2021, a joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council certifying the population census count for the fire service units in the parish of Lafayette for the purpose of distribution of 2% fire insurance rebate program.
Can I get a motion in a second? I have a motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint Resolution 11, 2021, a joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of 406 Hual Street to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana revised statute 472202B for the price of the sale's anticipated costs.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Lewis, second by Nakhan. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint Resolution 12, 2021, a joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of 103 Dorian Drive to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana revised statute 472202B for the price of the sale's anticipated costs.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Lazard, second by Nakhan. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
All right, moving on to reports and our discussion items. Jeremy, will you please read?
February Freeze Impact.
All right, it looks like I'm calling up Jeff Stewart to the podium. Lowell Dooyoung, come on down. Both podiums are live for you. Welcome. You're going to be talking to us about the February Freeze Impact.
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Your name, please?
All right, yes. Good evening, councilmembers. Lowell Dooyoung, Interim Director of Lafayette Utilities. I want to thank you guys for letting me provide this information on both the February Freeze Impact and Utility Outage App. We initially submitted a PowerPoint presentation, but after going through it, it was lengthy, and I know how important you guys' time is, so I decided to summarize it. I think I got it to around five or six minutes. So I'll start. You know, I've been up here before praising LUS, and this is not going to be any different. To see what they did during that freeze was just amazing, and you're going to see when I tell you what some of the things that they did during this unprecedented event was. The initial weather forecast that we got prompted us to fire up our generators at Hargis Ave and TJ Lave on the Sunday before the freeze. Rotemaker and Boyce was already running, but we maximized the generation of all of our generators until the following Saturday. This action saved LUS rate payers approximately $5 million, mainly because of the spike in fuel costs. During the, a normal MCF runs around $3 per MCF. The MCF spiked to $1,200 on MCF for that week, which was the main cause of the spike in cost. Total costs were about $9.5 million, but because we generated and put onto the grid, we recouped about half of that amount of money. The importance of firing up the generation before the freeze hit was important because there were other utility companies that have a similar type of generation that couldn't get their generators going once the freeze hit. There's some water problems, the freeze from the water problems, and they just couldn't get it going. And so it saved us a ton of money by starting it out beforehand. Okay, so then the freeze hits on Tuesday morning. At 6:19, we shed 10 megawatts of power. 30 minutes later, we shed an additional 10 megawatts, and then an hour later, we were able to restore to full power. Later on that evening, about 6:43, we shed nine megawatts of power. About an hour later, we reduced that down to five megawatts and then restored to full power an hour after that. But in order to provide the least amount of inconvenience to our customers, this is what our engineers did. So they, LUS has 84 feeders that provide service to all of our customers. Depending on who's on that feeder will depend on their priority. Hospitals, police, fire, they're top priorities. So we stayed away from those, and the engineers looked at the rest, and they started shedding power off of those feeders. But they didn't keep them on for a long period of time. They tried to keep it around 30 minutes. So they were able to just kind of do a spread and not hit the same feeder and not hit the same customer for 30 minutes max, and it really worked out well. And to tell you how important that is, the last time we've ever had to shed power was December 2010. So these guys had no, really no experience in, what, 11 years the last time they did it? But yet, that's how they responded, and it's pretty impressive. Now, on the water side, and this is pretty impressive also. So between the dripping faucets and the busted pipes after the freeze, there were water pressure problems throughout the city. I know you guys got your calls, but some were worse than others. The one on North Park Water Tower was the one that was particularly hit hard, and there was a boil water advisory that had to be called out. So LUS generates these reports that show excessive water use. And what the engineers did, they took the report and mapped out who and what meters were the most excessive. There were 2,500 LUS customers that showed up on this report. So they separated the 2,500 into 100 each, and each one of us, I took 100, and we started calling our customers, asking them to look for busted water pipes or whatever, something that's going on over there. They normally get robocalls, but if their, if their accurate, if their information isn't accurate, it created a problem. We also sent robocalls to other people that had, that showed up on this excessive water report in other areas of the city, and the effect was immediate. I mean, as soon as we started doing that, we, obviously, we had to wait for the freeze to get up, because that's when the water started thawing. But as soon as we did that, water pressure started rising up. And I told you earlier about the generations at TJ Lave and how we cranked it to full capacity and how much money it saved. So TJ Lave is also fed by the North Park Water Tower, and they had no power, I mean, excuse me, no pressure. So what the guys over at the Water Department did, they found these 5,000 tanker trucks, 5,000 gallon tanker trucks, filled them up, and went back and forth from our water distribution sites to TJ Lave for 24 hours a day until the pressures got back up. And, you know, the fact that they never had to deal with this stuff is just impressive. Can't say enough about them. So during the storm and then shortly afterwards, LUS delivered water to Alexandria, Shreveport, and I believe parts of Lake Charles, because none of them had water. There were other cities surrounding Lafayette, Baton Rouge, New Iberia, that were out of water also, but LUS was able to continue going. We also sent water and wastewater crews to Lake Charles to help them turn off water meters and help with the broken pipes and stuff. We sent utility, electric utility crews to Jonesville, Vidalia, and Natchitoches, and to help out there also. So just in closing, I wanted to just kind of tell you what these guys do. You know, I've been there a little over a year. We've had tornadoes, COVID, hurricanes, and now this ice storm that, you know, never happened before, and yet these guys just adapt. It's an amazing thing, and they are, there's something to behold, and it's a great asset to LUS. Now, this presentation kind of flows into your request, Ms. Ave, because it's about the utilities outage app. I told you about the importance of having your contact information accurate. On the lus.org website, there's my LUS account, I think LUS My Account, that gives you the place to provide your accurate information. It's also where you can pay online or set up autopay. You can also track your utility usage real time. You don't have to wait for us to send a letter. You don't have to wait for robocall. You can actually check it real time to see if your water is spiking or whatever. That app is scheduled to be rolled out on June 1st, and the way that it'll work initially is that any activity that's planned in a specific area of the city, whether it's tree trimming, sewer cleanouts, road closures, power outages, whatever, that area of the map will be shaded. And if you pull up the app and you see that there's a shaded area of the map, you can subscribe to it, and you'll get updates on that activity until it's done. Now, until the new power outage monitoring system is in place, which is coming up next summer, the individual will have to go in periodically, look for these shades, and subscribe every time, because once the activity's over, then it drops you off. But once the new power outage monitoring system is on and your information is accurate, you're going to get automatic updates, whether you put your email account or you get a text message. So, yeah, you'll get all of that right away. We're looking forward to that.
Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
I was just going to say is that at Budget, didn't we have a discussion about a future app where people can report an outage rather than having to call and wait on hold to report it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's the 311 portal, and that's accurate now, yeah.
So I was under the impression it was an LUS-specific app that was discussed, and it would show the outages, and then you could report, just, I'm having an outage on the app. Does any other council member remember that? I feel like we had the discussion at Budget. Yeah.
Can we?
No, go ahead. I'll make you live, since we're talking about the same thing. Go ahead.
No, maybe explain to me what the app you're talking about, because there is an app involved with this.
Yes, yes.
But it's not going to go up until June 1st.
That's right.
And so that app is going to be, what are the, you know, what's the potential for that app?
Okay, so the app, what happens on that app, you pull it up, and anytime we do any work in a specific area, it'll shade that area. And let's say it's in Benavardens, you can subscribe to that, and they'll send you updates on, you know, when the crews are coming and when they're completed and, you know, things like that.
So will that show an outage, then? If they're, it's showing work?
Yeah, yeah.
So that'll show, yeah.
Like managed outages, for one thing, but even outages that are out, the, right now it's going to be manual until the big one comes next year, but we'll update that. We'll show the outages on that map, so that if you pull it up, you'll see which part of the city's out.
So basically, we'll know that you know, too, because it's on the app?
That's right.
Because a lot of times, we call to make sure you know that it's out.
That's right.
So if that app's pulled up, we'll know. But it's not interactive, where we can press something on the app and say, hey, you know, I'm out at my house.
Out at my house. That's more on the 311.
But that's more, I guess that's the 311 potential. Yeah, okay.
Okay, but the app we're talking about here will be available in June, you mentioned?
June 1st.
June 1st. Okay, great. Perfect. Does, was that all, Ms. Cook?
Oh, yes, Ms.
Okay. All right. Any other council members have any questions? Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Lowell.
Last year, we got an extensive presentation.
I forget the technical name of it, basically on the future of LUS.
Yes, Integrated Resource Plan, possibly?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. In terms of where we were, where we were going, I think we discussed like, part of it was like a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, something of that nature.
Yes, sir.
Sometime this year, I guess, can we get an update on where we are with that?
Absolutely.
Because one of the big issues, I think, was determining what we was going to do with Boyce, with the coal-fired generating plant at Boyce. And, you know, you all are going to get back to us at some point after y'all got a little bit more research and did some more extensive studying on it. So if we could just bring us up to speed on that?
We'll do it.
At some point in the future.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Any other council members, discussions related to the February Freeze Impact or the outage, utilities outage app? Not seeing any, anything else, Mr. Lowell?
Oh, I saw the walls going up on four corners, Pat. Yeah, it's looking good, yeah.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, moving on to ordinances for final adoption. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
City ordinance 38, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a dwelling, two-family duplex in a residential, single-family zoning district, case number ZON 2021-7111, Annette Street, conditional use permit located generally north of Souvenir Gate, west of St. Joseph Street, and south of Congress Street.
Can I get a motion by Knockan? Second by Cook. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any. Public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 39, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify case numbers ZON 2021-9, 338, 340, and 342, Crest Lawn Drive, 601, 603, and 605, Rose Down Lane Administrative Rezoning located generally south of Crest Lawn Drive, north of Rose Down Lane, and west of Blue Rose Lane. The particular parcels being rezoned from commercial-heavy to residential, single-family.
Can I get a motion in a second? A motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yeah.
District one?
Yeah.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 40, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code and the official map of the City of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number ZON 2020-18, 234 Douillon Road Annexation located generally north of Douillon Road, east of Rue de Bellet, and south of Town Center Parkway, and assigning a zoning classification of commercial-mixed, District 2.
Motion by Knockan, second by Cook. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yeah.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 41, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Lazard, second by Knockan. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 42, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $45,000 from Bridge Repairs City and $15,000 from Hospital Drive, Gerard Park Roundabout, to the Adaptive Traffic Signal Control MTC project within the Traffic Roads and Bridges Department.
I got a motion by Cook. Second by Knockan. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 43, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the River Oaks Property Detention Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way, immovable property, and other property rights requisite to the construction of said project either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
Can I get a motion, I got a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion? I'm not seeing any, any public comments?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District one?
One.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 44, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the C. Middlebrook Property Detention Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way, immovable property, and other property rights requisite to the construction of said project either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
I got a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yeah.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 45, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting the manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by deleting one Planner 1 position and adding one Assistant Transit Supervisor position to the Public Works Department Transit Operations.
I got a motion by Knockan, second by Lazard. Council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District one? District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 46, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending and reenacting Section 94-119 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances regarding electric private security lighting rates.
I got a motion by Cook, second by Knockan. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 47, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital improvements budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Utilities Department for the Commission Boulevard Water Project.
I got a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 48, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of a 10-foot-by-10-foot utility niche on the Lot 26A of Cottage on the Green subdivision located at 106 Carnaby Drive.
I got a motion by Cook, second by Knockan. I heard, council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go for a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District one? Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinances for final adoption. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
Joint ordinance 15, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates.
I'm going to ask for a motion in a second. Motion by Lazard, second by Knockan. Finance has proposed an amendment to replace the budget revision with a revised budget document to increase audit fees. I'm asking for a motion in a second from the council to amend. I have a motion by Knockan, second by Lazard. Council discussion on the amendment? I'm not seeing any, any public comments?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? District two?
Yeah.
Motion to amend is approved.
All right, I'm going to go to a vote for the council to amend. Council discussion on ordinance as amended? Any public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? District two?
Yeah.
Motion to amend as amended is approved. Joint ordinance 17, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the operating budget and the capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of fund balance in Fund 702 Central Vehicle Maintenance Fund in the amount of $11,000 and appropriating within the Public Works Department Vehicle Maintenance Division to replace an alignment machine.
Can I get a motion in a second? I got a motion by Lazard, second by Knockan. Council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
All right, moving on to introductory ordinances. Can I get a motion, a second, to introduce items in Globo 26 through 31? Got a motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Jeremy, will you please read?
City ordinance 49, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by decreasing anticipated revenues in the amount of $149,500 in law enforcement-based specialist program grant funds from the Office for Victims of Crime within the Lafayette Police Department. City ordinance 50, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by moving the remaining budget amount, $59,202, from RPO Train Center Cascade System to a new project to install a compressor system at Station 8. City ordinance 51, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by re-appropriating the amount of $60,000 from Bridge Repairs City into the budget line of Pinhook Bridge Painting. City ordinance 52, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and maintenance budget and capital improvements budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Utilities Department. City ordinance 53, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operations and maintenance budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Utilities Department. City ordinance 54, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the Dugout Road Electrical Distribution Systems Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary land, servitudes, easements, rights of way, and other property rights on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
All right, council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?